Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Milani Maoka Launani Valley Neighborhood Board thirty-five regular meeting, October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, seven P M. At this time, I call the meeting to order. And ask scout B S A troop six-six-four to lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
May the audience please rise for the presentation of the colors? Color guard attention. Color guard forward, march. Mark time, march. Right wheel, march. Ready, hop. May you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ready, two? Color guard, mark time, march. Right wheel, march. Color guard forward, march. Mark time, march. Color guard dismissed, you may be seated.
Hey, thank you, troop six-six-four. Moving on to our meeting agenda, meeting decorum, vice chair Thomas here.
Thank you, Mister Chair, and on behalf of your Milani Maoka and Launani Neighborhood Board, again, welcome, everyone. And as with all our meetings, we welcome your feedback, ideas. All we ask is that you raise your hand, be recognized by the chair, and then the chair will motion you to come up to the microphone for you to speak. Those that are joining us virtually, again, same thing, raise your hand and the chair will recognize you. And the last is that we just ask, if possible, so we can get as much feedback as possible, if you could limit your comments to about three minutes. Okay, thank you very much, Chair, back to you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Moving on, this evening, we have a awards recognition presentation. So I'll turn the mic over to Alice Rogers, Alice.
Lana. Um, I wanted to, uh, I don't, we've got a recognition award for you, but I wanted to tell you, I was so impressed with all of the paperwork that you sent me. And I'd like to have that plaque. I mean, I thought that plaque was pretty cool. So anyway, step up there. And it says, the Milani Maoka Launani Valley Neighborhood Board, number thirty, thirty-five, I think, I'm a lot of. Presents his certificate of recognition to S P C Morgan Freeman. I think you have done such a fantastic job. I saw the letter signed by President Biden. Very, very, very impressive work to do. Anyway, I won't be aggressive with this article. You better turn around.
Yes, please. Appreciate you.
Sure.
I don't know.
All right, thank you.
Hey, Bart, hold on, hold on, Alice, Bart. Stick up. Okay, moving on to our monthly reports, Honolulu Fire Department.
All right, good evening, everybody. My name's Tony, I'm a firefighter with H F D forty-one first watch at the Maoka Fire Station. The reports are for last month of September versus Cisco. If you have any information, you can always email the H F D Public Affairs Media Liaison. That's at capital, all capitals, H F D N H B at Honolulu dot gov. Last couple of months, there was inquiries about the Milani Maoka brush fires. This particular is actually still under investigation by the U S Department of Interior. H F D cannot comment or provide any reports pending the federal investigation. Although he still can try to go to the website, H F D N H B at Honolulu dot gov, or the H F D website, that have more specific way to get that information. I have a, it's a report number for you. This is for Chair Dean Hazama. And it's seven-two-eight-five-six is the answer for number. And if you go to the fire Honolulu dot gov backslash request for information, you can type in that number when the ports are available and you get that information. Stats for last month, as far as fires goes, we just only had three active alarms. Medical emergencies, we had forty-two. And safety tip for the month is for smoke alarms. Every month, they need to be tested by just pressing the button. And every ten years, you need to replace the smoke alarm, or if the smoke alarm's not working, it obviously needs to be replaced. Okay, if there's any other questions, thank you for your time.
Any questions for the Honolulu Fire Department this evening? So what was the name of the federal agencies that doing their own investigation on the fire?
This is. The U S Department of Interior.
Okay, make sure we get that in a minute. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the Honolulu Police Department. Lieutenant, good evening.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Lieutenant Scott Vieira. I'm the night watch commander for the Wahevaupu Station, which covers Milani, Wahewa, and the North Shore. The stats that I'm going to read, cover last month, September fourteenth through October fourteenth of this month. There was one assault reported, there were zero robberies, there were two burglaries, and there was one U E M V, which is unlawful entry into a motor vehicle or stealing from your car. There was a total of four hundred and one calls for services during this time. The tip I have for this month is just some burglary prevention tips. The first one, it seems kind of common sense, but it's simply just lock your doors. Some of us forget, some of us, I go to my mom's house and her doors never lock. And she always said, oh, we never lock the doors. And I said, Mom, you cannot do that anymore. So just lock your doors, especially the closed garage door. Sometimes you're driving around, Milani has a lot of them. Some of them are up halfway, they're, I don't know if it's intentional or forgot to close them, but just make sure they're closed. Windows, the sliders, windows are more of a problem at the ground level. So if you guys have sliders, try to close them at night. Some people put bars where it's only a certain amount that is open, but the wind can come through. And then louvered windows like these or the glass ones. Ground level, most of us know, right? If they're open like that, you bend the tabs and you can pull out three or four pretty easily. But if you just close them, they're much harder to remove. Some people put crazy glue on the tabs. I don't know how effective that is. I'm sure that would help. And the last thing, surveillance systems nowadays, you know, a lot of us have surveillance systems. They're affordable with Wi-Fi, they're so much easier to work, and they really do help. But something to think about when you put in your cameras is the space. And some of the videos that I saw when I was a zone detective, which handles a lot of property crimes, you have a perfectly placed camera like at the garage, but it's so easy to get to. Sometimes you'll see a masked person come up and they'll just either remove it or put a cloth, and that kind of takes that camera out of play. So put them someplace where they're kind of inconspicuous. Another thing is, a lot of them, you guys have them, people have them hides, the excellent shot up there, front of the house. And you can see like very suspicious people walking around. And they might be very well the people that are causing problems. But it's also good to have them committing the crime. And if you only have them on the street, on the sidewalk, it's really hard for us to incorporate that for an arrest or for the case. So maybe have one like that, but if you have one that kind of pans back and it can kind of see the sidewalk area, the entrance or exit to your house, much more effective. Because if you got them going into your house, that's already a trespass. If they're coming out with goods, it's a burglary. So just things to think about when you guys set up your camera systems. That's all I have, if you guys have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Honolulu Police Department this evening? Even? You have a question?
No.
I just have one, so Lieutenant, the number of calls for District Two, four oh one, is that kind of high or?
That, you know, so that's only, not really, that's only Maoka and Launani. It's those two beaches, which you heard your board covers. If I was to run like the total, Milani would be much higher. But that was just for that district, thirty day period for Milani, Maoka, and Launani Valley.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you. You too. Board of Water Supply informed us that they're not coming this evening. Military Representative Colonel.
Good evening, Chair, Board residents. Tomorrow is supposed to be the last day for the Joint Multinational Readiness Center exercise, the one that's been making all the noise. You likely saw her increase in activity over the last two weeks. Army thanks you for your patience and understanding during the time of elevated activity. For anyone who wants it, I have a few more exercise information sheets for your information. Training will occur at East Range, October fourteenth through the nineteenth, and twenty-first through the twenty-fifth, from six A M. to six P M. This is separate from the J P M R C exercise. So this will be Jungle Operations Training Course and Ranger Tactics, which includes small arms blank fire. So kind of back to the normal. The next U S Army Garrison Hawaii Job Fair is November nineteenth at Alya Manu Military Reservation Gym, beginning at eight-thirty A M. and ending at two P M. The event is open to the public. There'll be job offers and provisional hiring the day of the job fair. Advanced applicants may go to W W W dot H I M W R dot com and click on employment banner to learn of the openings. Walk-ins are welcome and should bring two references, proof of I D, social security card, resume, or application. There are opportunities in business operations like golf, bowling, food service, and many more. The Child Youth Services, or C Y S, will have openings to consider. For those who work in C Y S, there's a variety of benefits such as retirement, access to all recreation facilities, discounted childcare, training, and commissary and P X privileges. If you're interested in working with children, they have a position for you. Come in and see what employment opportunities await. Reports or concerns related to noise or training, or any concerns in general, contact U S Army Hawaii's Community Concern Line at eight oh eight seven eight seven one five two eight, or U S A G dot Hawaii dot C O M R E L at army dot. But that's mine.
Thank you, Colonel. Any questions for the Military Representative this evening? Anyone online? Thank you, Colonel. Okay, moving on to board business, we have a presentation this evening on the installation of two communication facilities in Milani Maoka by A T and T Mobility. Anybody online? From A T and T?
Yes, this is Bryce Gobak. I am from Centerline Communications. I'm representing A T and T for these two sites. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can, go ahead.
Okay, let me just share my screen. Let me just give you a brief rundown. Right now, in Milani Maoka, the only site A T and T currently has is on the H two on ramp, down by the H two. And we're proposing two sites. I'm going to share my presentation to fill in the coverage gap. Let's see. Excuse me for a sec, I'm going to try and share again. There we go. Sorry about that. Are you guys able to see my presentation now?
Yep, came up, thank you.
Okay, basically, the coverage justification is to cover and covered both sides of the Milani Maoka, starting, we're covering the freeway side by the on ramp. We're trying to cover the western portion by co-locating on the rooftop at the central self-storage building by the rec center. And the second property is located on an orchard farm property towards the east side, northeast side of the Maoka community. So going here, this is where the first site is, down by the freeway. We're proposing this second site on the central self-storage to fill in this coverage gap here, where the red is in the middle portion. And then I'll show you on the second site that, what that's filling in. So so this is before before the coverage improvement. And this is after the coverage for A T and T, after we co-locate at the Milani central self-storage station. So that's, I mean. Excuse me for a sec, sorry, I'm one sec while I pull up the and to show you what this site will look like. So here's the central self-storage right here. We're proposing a lease area, equipment area here on the roof with three sectors of antennas pointing in different direction.
Slides didn't come up yet, hold on. We don't, we don't see your slides.
Apologies, let me share again here. Okay, sorry about that, can you see it now?
Not yet.
Can you see now? Not sure what side I'm sharing, oh, let me try again. Sorry about the technical problems, can you see the overhead now?
Yep, go ahead.
Sorry about that. Here's the central self-storage here. And this is what the top of the roof would look like after. We put our equipment area here, and there'll be three sectors of antennas pointing in the directions most needed for the coverage of the immediate area. And this would be the elevation of what the antennas would, each sled would have three antennas on it. And here, you can see the equipment cabinet a little bit there. And then here's the second site on the Maoka side here at the Orchard Farm. We're proposing a tower disguised as a pine tree within this group of trees over here. We'll clear some, the antennas will stick out about twenty feet above the tree line. And we'll be covering the, you know, this, this, the media group of houses over here. And this is the overhead of the equipment area. And you can see the tower would be right here, and this would be the pine tree portion. That would be a hundred and fifty foot high. And this is what the monopine tree will look like. Again, there'll be trees in the front and back, but the portion sticking above the antennas would, you know, be about twenty feet in some places, depending on the tree height. But a lot of the trees in the area, you know, are eighty to a hundred feet tall, so. And if anyone here on the board or in the participant room wants, has more questions, they can email me at this email address, and I'm happy to send you in any information you might require about these two proposed sites. And we're currently in zoning for both sites. But obviously, just as part of the zoning process is to present to the neighborhood board. So just want to make everyone aware of that also. So I'm happy to answer any questions aboard or any me members have about these two proposed sites.
Okay, board members, you have any questions? Anyone online?
I have a quick question. You go ahead.
Yes.
What's the schedule?
We're hoping to build next year if we can get through D P P's building permit process. But as you all probably are aware, sometimes that can be lengthy. We're hoping to have zoning approval in November. We'll create a full set of engineered construction drawings. It can take forty-eight months to get through D P P building permit process. But the hope is to build next year and fill in this coverage gap for A T and T. For then we'll have Maoka covered for the foreseeable future and feel like better than the other carriers because they're on the rec center monopole, and that pole is full, there's no more space on it. So that's, you know, this is A T and T's plan to bring coverage, good five G, you know, for five G coverage to Maoka.
Thank you.
You can stop sharing your screen. Any questions? So I got a couple. So on the storage building, what is the height of your antenna on that roof?
Um, I think it was like, yeah, someone brought that up, the planner did. So you can see the top of the antennas called out. Oh, I should not share my screen anymore, but on the slide, it's thirty-eight, the top of antenna, the middle of the tennis thirty-four, and then the bottom of a ten is going to be at thirty. The parapet wall of the storage facility is at twenty-five feet. So.
So about nine feet?
Yeah, the antennas are eight feet, will be thirteen feet total above the parapet because you need a little bit of clearance above the parapet for the antennas. And then the eight-foot antennas, so thirty, yeah, thirty-eight feet. So compared to the top of the parapet's twenty-five feet.
Okay, on the Kapono'i Street site, who owns that property?
Uh, her name's Sharon Geary.
Oh, it's a private landowner?
Yes, it's a private landowner.
And what is the setback from the closest home?
Uh, it's, oh, I can.
Ultimately, I'm not going to hold you to.
Yeah, I can tell you right on Google Earth if you give me one sec here. I can tell you, we meet the setbacks according to the county code. But the setback would be from the rear property would be let me convert to feet, I can tell you how many feet. It's about a hundred and eighty feet, so more or less, take or give, that's just based on Google Earth, it's not an official survey, you know, but more or less about thirty, you know, the tower's a hundred and fifty feet, the nearest property lines a hundred and eighty.
Okay, any other questions?
I have a question. So, yeah, my name is Corey Soon. I'm a A T and T customer, and I also live on the street that's closest to where the proposed antenna is on the farm. I was just curious, um, my coverage is spotty, but I'm okay with it. I use Wi-Fi calling, I get by just fine. Um, but certainly, coverage where we're at would be improved with the central location on top of the, that self-storage unit. Is it possible that, you know, satisfactory coverage would be achieved with just that antenna on top of the storage unit?
Now, I can reshare kind of like the map, but the antennas, because of the limited height of the storage facilities, only two stories. And there's a little bit of a change in elevation to certain parts of that side of your neighborhood on the Maoka side. So they, you know, they felt like two sites were necessary to fill in, you know, both sides to get the neighborhood completely covered, you know, between the three sites. So the one by the, existing one by the H two, one in the middle of the neighborhood, and the one on the Orchard property, the monopine.
Yeah, I think with the coverage, the spotty coverage out now, I have to believe that it would at least, it would be satisfactory for calls with just that antenna.
Yeah, it's the data, yeah. And we do expect other carriers to co-locate on this tower once it's built because I can guarantee you the ones at the rec center, the tower at the rec center has Verizon and T-Mobile, and I can almost guarantee they're not reaching out to that side of the Maoka side of the neighborhood, even with their tower. So we feel confident like other carriers will also co-locate on this to get better data coverage as well to this side.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I'll just share my opinion being that we're on the street closest to this antenna. And, you know, the farm is our neighbor. They have various business activities that they do, um, which we understand. But, I mean, there are impacts to those that live right next to the farm. I mean, they have have had a lot of helicopter, helicopter activity, just literally like a helicopter taking on it, taking off and landing in your backyard. The noise, the exhaust, and of course, there's some risk involved, that close proximity. Um, you know, movie shoot, movie shoots, causing congestion up there. You know, animal smells and sounds. You know, these are all things we understand, we deal with. But, um, you know, personally, I would not like this antenna in our backyard. You know, it's, it's on slightly, I'm sure it's going to affect property values. I would like to see it either stick with just the central location on the storage unit or move it further into their property. I mean, why put it in someone else's backyard? You know, it's off outside of the trees on their property, they don't really have to deal with it. It should be moved as a compromise, if they want it, move it more onto their property. So, yeah, that's just, um, that's just my opinion.
If you would like to email me, I could be happy to put you in touch with External Affairs for official regarding the comment regarding moving it back past the tree, the tree, tree line. I mean, we kind of got it in the tree line now. If we were to move it farther back because of the way that, how antennas are aligned of site technology. So to cover a certain area, they have to be at a certain height, and they're down tilted slightly to cover the area they want to cover. So if they move the tower two back and down tilt the antennas, they're shooting into tree, and they're not, you know, it becomes, they limit their coverage objective. The only way, the only way to overcome that is to make it a two-hundred-foot tower. So we try and pick a kind of a middle ground where, hey, this is being covered by the trees, but it's still close enough where it's going to cover the neighborhood per se, you know. So that was the thinking behind that. We're not building too close to upset the neighbors or anything like that. But sometimes it's a little bit of a tricky business with the design, you know, because the engineers are looking to cover as much customers as possible, that's all. But I'm happy to share your opinion with A T and T and their External Affairs. If you just shoot me an email, with the email I provided, I'll be happy to share your concerns with A T and T and see if they can give you a response on that, so.
Yep, will do.
Okay, thank you, any other questions?
Chair?
Yes?
I have a question for A T and T. I'm familiar with that property back there, and the further you go back, there is a rise. So if you could be so kind to answer Corey's question relative to answer Corey's question relative to if you move that antenna back, you're going to hit a higher elevation. Would the distance back with the increased elevation make it more amiable for the residents in that area? There is a rise there. Did you look into that?
Yeah, um. Yeah, there there's also the question of you know, how far back we can get um um, from the property. Also, if we get too far back from utilities and stuff, it might become a cost burden where it wouldn't justify the site costs. I I don't know if you guys are aware of HECO requirements, but you have to encase there or build poles. Um, and they're charging a lot for their poles nowadays after the fire especially. So if we start having a thousand foot power run or something to coverage, you know, to cover, you know, a couple hundred customers, they might say, hey, one of the problems we have with why is once we get too far away from utilities, the costs on these sites become unsustainable. And then they can't build sites. We've had a couple when in Capitol, Capitol A recently that we had to run eight poles too. And it just became, we couldn't build it because of cost, you know, they can justify the cost. So um, that's another reason, you know, you kind of, you try and move it away from the houses as much as you can. But the nearest power connection is a transformer, you know, right there at the property line. So um, you know, so they it's kind of like a give or take, but I'm happy to share that to see if they're willing to move it back farther. Um, you know, um, and they could still justify the cost if, you know, if anyone wants to send me an email, I can share that concern with them if they're, if that's something they would want to, you know, consider at the least they'll reply to it, you know. So.
Bryce, thank you. I would suggest you put it as a line item in your report that it was brought up at the neighborhood board. You assessed it. And this is your conclusion or your recommendation?
Yeah, I'm required to bring that to the planner's attention when we, so I'll definitely bring these two concerns up to the planner at the DPP as well. So.
Great, thank you.
All right.
All right. Any other questions? Right. Thank you, Bryce.
Thank you. Bye bye.
Moving on to Milani Holiday Parade, Milani Lions Club. Aaron Lee.
Sorry. Things kind of unstable. Anyhow, good evening, board members and Chair Hazama, people in the audience. Um, you've probably heard this story again and again, because we have a holiday parade each year. There's a couple new things that you'll be surprised with here. Anyhow, I am a member of the Milani Lions. The parade is presented by the Milani Lions Club by the and is sponsored by the Milani Shopping Center, Town Center of Hawaii, of Milani. HPD, are they still here to them? And Y Food Bank. And there is an opportunity to give any food, canned foods by coming over to the school. This is the thirty seventh annual Milani Holiday Parade. We skipped two of them during the pandemic, but we're back to it. And it's very exciting for the Lions Club to do it. It's a lot of work, but the parade route is actually, um, parade starts at nine AM, but the school opens John Kowinana Stadium, you know, where the gate is to go into the field. Opens at seven. And so if you are involved in a parade group and you want to come early or you want to have to line up, you jump, come in there and remember there is no parking on the street there. Um, so the parade route is leaving Milani High School, Kowinana Stadium, along Kipapa Drive, crossing Quanilani Avenue, past the Milani Shopping Center. And that's important because that's where the judging booth is. So if you're looking to win a prize in the parade, uh, walk slowly by the judging booth. Um, it goes after that, right on Anamano Street, left on Quanilani Avenue, right onto Mayhew, down to the town center. Um, if you're interested in being a part of the parade, there isn't a website, but there is a QR code that I put on the poster on the um table there. And um, you just scan that and you can be connected to all the documents that are needed to apply. But the deadline for the application is November first. And you can use the the QR code that I said. And the participate. Um, the two things that changed that I think are kind of amusing. Um, only amusing, but different. Only one official Santa Claus will be included in the parade. So if any of you were thinking about being Santa Claus or Mrs. Santa Claus, unless you're the official Santa, you cannot appear in a parade. You'll not be allowed to participate and you'll be effectively turned away from the parade. And also for safety purposes, participants are not allowed to distribute candies or leaflets during the parade. So volunteers with Santa will be the only ones authorized to hang out, hand out, pre rate wrapped candy canes along the parade route. And I know in years past that everybody was handing out all kinds of things. I know our church handed out way, but um no more candy chains. So hate to disappoint you, but um, we hope, you know, safety first. And we hope a lot of people will attend and um, we'll get together and get that community spirit going. So thank you very much, board, for having me and aloha.
Thank you. Any questions for the Lions Club regarding the parade? Thank you.
Question.
Yeah, go ahead, Stephen.
I'm so sorry. I didn't hear the date for the parade.
Oh, I'm sorry. Maybe I didn't say it. Um, it's Sun Saturday, December seventh, starting at nine AM and continuing till ten thirty. And there'll be activities over in the town center after the parade, which I I probably should have mentioned too. And that goes for the kids, a lot of different exhibits and things to do.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, a presentation by the Hawaii School Facilities Authority, Sherry Nakamura. Good evening.
Aloha and good evening. My name is Sherry Nakamura and I am the community liaison for the Hawaii School Facilities Authority. HISFA. HISFA is a state agency separate from the DOE, created in twenty twenty, responsible for building workforce housing on school lands. We're very excited about leading the Milani High School Teacher Housing Project, the first teacher workforce housing project in the state. We received some of your questions and we thank this board for your interest in the project. We're happy to share with you what we know so far. It is still early in the process, so there are a lot of things that we still do not know. If we're not able to answer your questions now, we will be sure to note them so that we may address them as we progress through the process. You should have one handout, which is the process flow of the project. I will do a short presentation. This will be followed by question and answer. During the twenty twenty three legislative session, the bill to provide affordable teacher housing as a recruitment and retention strategy to address the teacher shortage received a lot of support and attention. The legislature recommended Milani High School as the initial site for the project. In July twenty twenty three, Governor Josh Green signed Act one seventy two into law. It provided the HISFA the powers to partner with public and private development agencies to develop housing projects on school lands. In December twenty twenty three, HISFA issued a request for proposal or RFP to find a partner to design, build, finance, operate and maintain this new housing project. Please refer to your handout. I would like to explain the project's process because it is different from what the public and government are used to. In this process, HISFA, the leads, the lead state agency and facilitator of the teacher housing project. Oh, so excuse me. In this process, HISFA is the lead agency and the facilitator of the teacher housing project. We sought a partner for this project and issued an RFP. In the handout, it is the first block. December twenty twenty, December twenty twenty three. Following Act one seventy two, the RFP had two requirements. One, it had to be on the Milani High School campus. And two, it had to be affordable rental housing for teachers with rent set at or below a hundred and twenty percent of the area median income. After the award was posted, months took place in which there was work done with potential offers and the offer pool narrowed down to a priority list. Doing this during this period, HISFA was not able to do community communications regarding the project because of the competitive nature of the RFP. The notice of the award was made in August twenty twenty four. And there was a lot of excitement and attention around the proposal. But in the excitement, the information was released without explaining the full context of the process, which made it look like the proposal was the final plan. The proposal is not the final plan. It is more like the first step and many things still need to be finalized. We are still actually very early in the project process, which is different from a typical project in which the award is more like the final plan before construction. We want to apologize to the community for this. We acknowledge that we could have done things better and communicated the context better around the award. We hope to do a reset tonight so that we can have a better relationship with you and a better mutual understanding going forward. The award was made to Pacific Housing Assistance Corporation, a nonprofit organization with over forty years' experience in affordable housing developments. Again, their proposal is a starting point. So the content in the proposal is not set in stone. If you look at the handout, we are now at the purple phase. And as you see the long arrow, there are many things that need to be done before we get to the goal of the final plan. And again, this is where the process differs from other traditional state projects. We are entering the next phase in which there will be various due diligence processes, which include stakeholder engagement. An environmental assessment or EA and traffic analysis will also occur going forward. Additionally, HISFA will consult and discuss directly with our partner, Pacific Housing, to come to the final development agreement. We'd like to go over a framework for HISFA's and Pacific Housing stakeholder engagement. We are here tonight to meet you in person so that we can work together going forward. As I mentioned, we really look forward to hearing your questions and input tonight. We value your feedback as it will help us make the project better. Through a website and newsletter, which we plan to start in November, we will continue our communications with the public. It will likely be a page on HISFA's website, but as we are in constant communication with Pacific Housing, you can think of it as a joint platform. The public will also be able to ask questions about the project through the web. So embark embark on a stakeholder feedback process. We anticipate this will start in the coming months. There will also be a due diligence, there will also be due diligence such as the EAA process in which community feedback is an essential, is an essential component. Finally, my contact information is sherry.nakamura@hisfa.org. That's C H E R I dot N A K A M U R A at hisfa.org. And you can email me anytime if you have questions. That's the end of my presentation and I am open to answer the questions that you may have. Mahalo.
Thank you, Sherry. Any questions for um, HISFA this evening? I just have a.
I just wanted to ask, was there an initial budget proposed for this?
So this is a different kind of project. Uh, it is a state and uh, private or public entity partnership. So in this instance, the partner will be doing the design, build, finance, operate and manage. So there is no state funding for those things from the state at this point. Um, but in the proposal, uh, there is some ask for um some things that Pacific Housing would like to do, um, which is they're they're asking five million dollars from the state for this project. But the bulk of the project, the financing of the project will be done by Pacific Housing.
This is a PPP project.
Correct. It's a PPP.
The five million dollars has to be appropriated out of I SFA funds or you guys got to appropriate that?
Um, it's still not determined yet, but one way could be having the appropriation come through HISFA. Yes.
And I I didn't read the act, but did the act exempt the project from any entitlement? As far as, um, so is it a two oh one H project because it's affordable housing or?
Our understanding, uh, you're referring to the EA process, is that?
No, no. So affordable, affordable housing projects get to skip certain permitting and entitlements.
I'd have to get back to you on that.
You can, yeah. So two oh one H is the, I think the state statute that allows the affordable housing projects to bypass entitlement. I'm just guessing that that, I don't know if the act exempted or waived that, or do you guys still have to comply with that?
I'll get back to you on that.
Okay. Any other questions? I mean, just general comments, I think. Yep.
I'm sorry. I have a quick.
Go ahead, Stephen. Uh, question is, I just looked up Pacific Housing and they're complying and all that. Have they chosen a construction company yet?
Um. I believe in their proposal, they listed um, the partners that they would be working in, working with. Um, again, I can't name the specific um partner, but I believe it's in the proposal, if I'm not mistaken, but I don't want to misspeak, so I can get back to you on that.
Thank you. Thank you. The last part of the question is that because of the process that's being involved and it is a design build, do you have a schedule when the building actually be up?
Uh, we don't.
What's the goal date?
Again, so in this process, a proposal was submitted and in the proposal, there are um timelines as to how the project process occurs. But uh, it's difficult to know whether we can stick to that timeline because so many things need to happen from now until project actually starts construction, for example. So it's difficult to um, give you that answer specifically at this moment. I can tell you that in the proposal, okay, in the proposal, uh, the the targeted uh, date when teachers could move in, I believe is uh, twenty twenty eight, December of twenty twenty eight. So many things can happen in between that we're not, we're not able to uh, commit to that date at the moment.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Chair, sorry. I'm I'm online. I don't know how to raise my my hand on the phone. Um, can I ask a question?
Yeah, who, can you identify yourself, please?
Yes, my name is Sabrina Gustafson. Um, I'm a member of the community and a graduate of O four from Milani High School. And I have a question. Um, does the Milani High School administration and staff support the project the way it stands?
Um, we have actually the principal of Milani High School here. Um. I can let him speak. I can let him speak, as I think it's better if he speaks and I don't speak for him. So I'm going to invite Principal Murphy up here.
Hi, Sabrina. I, I'm in full support of the concept. You know, when it comes to the need for teacher housing and the ability for people, especially people who, you know, are starting out in their career, to be able to afford to be teachers and live near where they teach. That's, it's so difficult for, for many teachers who are starting off. So when it's, when it comes to the need for teacher housing, when it comes to the need to support starting out teachers, absolutely. I do have reservations about the project at this time. We've had a lot of phone calls and letters regarding the site that was announced. And if that wasn't really clear, there are many parameters about the project that are still up for negotiation and feedback from the community. So I can't fully endorse it at this time until I see what the actual site is. But what I've, what, what I've talked to Pacific Housing and the many stakeholders about is I'm an opportunistic person when it comes to Mililani High School. I'm looking at what is the benefit that will come to the campus for sacrificing a plot of land, for dealing with the construction, or dealing with the relocation of facilities. So I'm reserving my full support until I see what the benefits will be from Mililani High School. And that's, that's where I'm at at this time. I, I hope that answers your questions, Sabrina.
It does. Thank you. Chair, can I ask one more question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Murphy, have you talked to the staff and the teachers? Do they feel that the rental rates being proposed by Pacific Housing Authority are reasonable for the salary that they currently receive?
So actually, I received the same kind of information that the general public has received. And so this is the first official communication out to the community, and I'm encouraging our staff members to participate in conversation like this and find out more about the project. We have not had that conversation.
Thank you so much, Chair. I appreciate your time.
Hey, any other questions? I don't want to put you on the spot.
No, 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 no worries.
So I don't know how many units you have, but who, who will make the decision on, I guess, if there's a waiting list or more applicants than units? Who makes the decision on who gets to right there?
So again, this project is a D B F O N, design, build, finance, operate, and maintain. So Pacific Housing will likely find a partner to do the property management. So there will be a property management entity, which is not the state who's professional, who will be managing, you know, the tenant application and figuring determining who gets accepted and how the waitlist will occur. I think that's all going to be handled with the property manager. But there will be criteria regarding who is eligible.
Yeah, the qualification part I understand, but assuming you have more qualified applicants than units, then the property manager will make that decision, and the state has no input into that, or how's that going to work?
I'm going to get back to you on that. I don't want to give you incorrect information. My understanding right now is that would be the case, that it as HISAFA wouldn't make that determination. It would be up to the property manager, but let me confirm that again.
And does the PPP have a, have a timeframe or a life? The twenty-five years, thirty years?
It's a sixty-five year lease.
Sixty-five year lease. Okay. Okay. And I would assume the, this is rental though, right? All rentals?
It's a rental, yes.
Okay. So the equity would go back into the project. Okay. All right.
Make one clarification. Sure. Just want to make sure. I know when we say things like Mililani High School Faculty Housing, it sounds like it's a Mililani High School project. This is a state of Hawaii project, and it's for teachers statewide, not only for Mililani High School teachers. So there has been some confusion about that. I want to make sure that clarification is made.
But you, you are the pilot, just to let you know.
That's the idea. That's the idea. And, and the idea is that more projects like this can happen across the state, especially in areas where housing is very hard to come by, near schools where they work. There are people who commute fifty, sixty miles in some of our remote areas in Hawaii that don't have housing, hoping to see something good come about in these areas.
Yeah, I was kind of surprised, although, you know, Mililani High School kind of pilots a lot of programs. But I, I would think that one of the Leeward Coast schools would be one of the first pilots or something. But congratulations, I guess. I don't know, I don't know. But thank you. And yeah, I, I'm sure this is just the first step to keep us in touch. I would like to, you know, that the housing is a critical need, especially affordable housing, especially in Hawaiian side. So I look forward to getting more news and then participating more and getting more public feedback and input from the community on this project, so.
I was going to say, yes, I, I will be back again, so I look forward to seeing you back again.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Principal Murphy. All right, moving on to residents concerned this evening. I know we have one. If you want to come up, please. If you could state your name, please.
Good evening. My name is Martin Thorpegaro. Marty Odegaro. My wife and I have been residents in Mililani since nineteen ninety-six. I'm here to express our concerns about the low overflights of Air Force C seventeen aircraft over the middle of Mililani Town and community during the period nine to thirteen October twenty twenty-four as part of the Joint Pacific Multinational Rating Miss Center Annual Training Exercises. We first heard and saw the C seventeen flyovers early last week. C seventeens flew very low and slow, approximately a thousand feet above rooftops, following Melehula Parkway as a roadway. These flights came as a complete surprise to us. In our opinion, the risks and dangers to the Mililani community are extremely high for low overflights of fixed-wing aircraft. Just think, just think of a heavy C seventeen crashing with highly volatile jet fuel. Aircraft parts when burning producing extremely toxic fumes. Possible explosive munitions scattered throughout the burning crash sites and high casualties in the heart of the Alani community during the exercise flying period, which was, which I was informed was between nine AM and twelve PM during a weekday. I, I think they also flew in the afternoons and in the evenings and on a weekend. During a weekday, this is a peak period of activity in Mililani. Attendance of Mililani High School, Middle School, all elementary schools, high activity at the Mililani Town Center and post office areas. And think about the impact to the residential homes, all of which are on the C seventeen flight path. These dangers are a reason why there are no similar overflights over Honolulu. So why are they flying over Mililani? Are our EMS first responders equipped and trained for mass casualty aircraft accidents? We should know the answers to these questions before C seventeen flights occur. I reviewed all twenty twenty-four Official Neighborhood Board Thirty-five Minutes. That's January through September, and found no information about C seventeen flyovers of Mililani community. The only repeated generic statements I found were that, quote, "There would be an increase in helicopter and fixed-wing aircraft activity around the Wheeler Army Airfield and Dillingham Military Reservation associated with annual training exercises." That's all. I think in the October draft, have the same statements. Again, no, nothing specific about low-flying C seventeens over the center of Mililani community. So we assume there are no info briefings, no discussions about C seventeen overflight exercise scenarios presented to the Mililani community and to the Neighborhood Board Thirty-five. In my opinion, potential impact for our Mililani community in event of C seventeen accidental crash clearly justifies the need for open discussions between DOD and military, community, and state leaders, particularly EMS first responders before any fixed-wing overflights, particularly C seventeens, are supported and approved. In closing, our suggestion to the Neighborhood Board Thirty-five is to solicit mil rep support of our following recommendations. A, that at the next scheduled Neighborhood Board Thirty-five meeting, request DOD representatives provide an information briefing to board reps, particularly EMS agencies, on the current Wheeler Army Airfield flight regulations and restrictions on helicopter and fixed-wing aircraft flights into and out of Wheeler Army Airfield. This to include flight accidents, response measures, and approve FAA flight patterns into and out of Wheeler Army Airfield. This is to provide a baseline in understanding of flight operations at Wheeler Army Airfield, which is not known to a lot of people. Secondly, request DOD representatives brief for information and discussion at the Neighborhood Board and EMS, to the Neighborhood Board and EMS agencies on the calendar year twenty twenty-five and all future exercise scenarios involving helicopter and fixed-wing aircraft flying over and through the Mililani community area. And lastly, we ask that Neighborhood Board Thirty-five leadership solicit DOD to sponsor an aircraft crash mass casualty exercise, a tabletop exercise, as part of their annual training exercises. The focus must be a large fixed-wing aircraft crash in the Mililani community, not on Wheeler Army Airfield or Skofa, and involve state and local EMS first responders, fire, police, medical, to participate. This will help our EMS first responders identify the requon, their requirements when responding to mitigate large military aircraft crashes and mass casualty incidents. Thank you for the opportunity to express our concerns. This concludes my statement.
Thank you, Marty. Any questions? Anyone? Okay, thank you. Any other residents or community concerns this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to our elected official report. The governor's rep has told me in advance she will not be able to make it. Do we have Congressman Ed Casey's office online? No. If not, we'll move on to Office of Mayor Rick Blangiardi. Carrie, are you online?
Hi. Good evening, Chair Hazama and board members. Carrie Castle.
Go ahead, Carrie. We can hear you.
Okay. Carrie Castle, Deputy Director of Budget and Fiscal Services, representing Mayor Blangiardi this evening. In the, in the interest of time, I'll just mention a few highlights from the mayor's October twenty twenty-four newsletter. Three highlights would be that there is an update on the rail transit operations with respect to, in particular, testing of the second segment, which will have stations at Pearl Harbor as well as the airport. Another item that's worthwhile is mentioning is that the city unveiled a la respite facility, which is aimed at addressing homelessness. And lastly, the Honolulu Medical Examiner's Facility has been upgraded. So, you know, it was sorely lacking many of the key equipment that is needed to do their work in a more efficient manner. So I will put the link to the mayor's newsletter in the chat. Chair, I wanted to make sure that you received the notice of the sidewalk repairs that are going to take place in Mililani. So I'm glad that they put out that listing, addressing, indicating which streets they will be addressing. Moving on to the departmental issues from last meeting. The first item regarding the Mililani Malka Park and Ride lamp post damage. In last, in the last meeting, a member, Cuella, sorry, Kuha, Ku Eh Hu shared that cars are hitting the newly installed lamp posts behind the stalls with their car bumpers because they're way too close. So the update is that the FM Department of Facilities Maintenance will replace the post at the same location as the original pole. If the location needs to be changed, please refer a DART to DDC for them to investigate and provide further direction for relocation. Regarding the second item, which is the Wekau Street signage damage. In this particular instance, it was requested that various street signs and fire hydrants, which are continuing to be damaged. There was a request to put in different kind of, like a guardrail and different kinds of flashing lights so that this, the situation can be corrected once and for all. What we understand is that DTS recently recommended that the Department of Design and Construction program the installation of a guardrail at the bend of Wekau Street in the vicinity of the Trinity Church. In addition, a work order was issued to the Department of Facilities Maintenance to replace the missing Chevron alignment signs to provide additional guidance for motor, motorists transversing the area. That's all I have to report.
Thank you, Carrie. Any questions for the mayor's office this evening? You are online? Okay, thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Moving on to console, District Eight, is Councilmember Okimoto online?
Yes, this is Aaron Wilson. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Board. Trying to keep this short. Bill fifty-two and legislative updates. Bill fifty-two relating to the possession and use of bicycles and electric bicycles passed the second reading and heading back to committee. And Bill forty-six, which is through the empty home tax, there should be a special budget hearing this month. And the last month, I was asked about the resurfacing, who was responsible for these signs? That would be the contractor. They're responsible for putting up, posting the signs when they're going to be working in a certain area. If I have any questions, I can bring back to the council member. I'd be happy to take them.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Okimoto this evening? You know, online? Okay. Thank you very much. Councilmember District Two, Councilmember Wire. Kelly.
Hi, Chair. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, Chair Hazama and members of the board. Kelly Anaya from Councilmember Matt Wire's office. Just a couple legislative updates. Councilmember wanted to remind everybody as, as, as a reminder, bills require three readings at full council and to be passed and then sent to the mayor for signing into law. Couple legislative updates regarding bills. Bill forty regarding self-certification for solar permits. Um, Bill Forty, um, regarding self-certification for solar permits, passed third reading at full council last week and will be sent to the mayor for signature. Um, this bill will provide, um, or actually would simplify the process to install rooftop solar and reduce the backlog at DPP. Um, Bill Twenty-Two, um, legalizing certain fireworks, passed third reading, third reading as well over Councilmember Wire's, um, no vote. Um, his concerns were the measures, um, were potential risk for wildfires as well as HFD's, um, presentation on the data on human injury and fire risks. Um, Resolution Twenty-Four Two-One-Three, which provides recycling receptacles in city parks and recreational facilities passed out as well and has been adopted. And Councilmember would like to thank the, um, Honolulu Youth Commission for spearheading this measure. Um, but if Councilmember Okimoto's office touched upon Bill Fifty-Two and Forty-Six, um, and so Bill Forty-Seven, um, the Iacapuna Tax Relief Bill, as well as Bill Forty-Five, which will increase the, um, low-income threshold to one hundred thousand, um, passed second reading at full council and both are in the Budget Committee. And, uh, lastly, just wanted to recognize, um, Genshu Price. Um, you've probably heard of him. He was honored at, um, this month's full council meeting, um, for his leadership in sustainability and educational empowerment. Um, he created the Bottles for College to fund the high cost of college tuition, and he also now offers scholarships to other students through his organization. Uh, that's it for me. If anyone has any questions for Councilmember, I can take them back.
Hey, thank you, Kelly. Any questions for Councilmember Wire? Nope, you're on the line. Okay, thank you, Kelly. Moving on to.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Moving on to Senate District Seventeen, Senator De La Cruz's office.
Yeah, hi, everyone. Uh, good evening, Chair, Board members. Um, so Malakai Burrows, um, in the office of Senator De La Cruz. Um, not too much to update on, um, from last month. Um, I just want to note that, uh, last month, September, was, uh, Official Workforce Development Month. Um, so I don't know if anyone knows, but Senator De La Cruz is, has been a champion and has been really involved in trying to, you know, build up the workforce in Hawaii and support, um, you know, our key industries with a strong workforce. Um, and in, in honoring some of those efforts of the past year, uh, the Workforce Development Council, um, which is attached to DLIR, so the Department of Labor and Industrial Relations, um, they, um, awarded Senator the legislator of the year. Um, so they had a series of awards, um, the Workforce Development Hero Awards, and so Senator De La Cruz was, uh, awarded the legislator of the year. Um, a couple noteworthy initiatives that he's been working on. Um, one, Halea Mua, the Halea Mua Internship Program, uh, it's a state program, um, to get, um, basically to offer paid internships, uh, um, paid by the state, uh, for, um, state jobs and state internships. Um, so at one time, supporting, you know, the vacancy, uh, problem that we've had at the, the state level, um, while also giving some, uh, young folks, uh, a good opportunity to, um, get some good experience in, in state government. Um, also, the Holina Scholarship, uh, Senator helped fund that one. Um, that was for folks going into the tourism industry, so getting those folks in scholarships, um, uh, for the TIM, um, travel industry management, uh, through UH. Um, so that's it for Workforce Development Month. Um, just wanted to touch on, uh, biosecurity-related, um, thing that Senator was involved with. He and some other state agency stakeholders and some members of the legislature, um, recently went on a, uh, site visit to New Zealand. Um, New Zealand has one of the strongest, if not the best, biosecurity systems, uh, in the world. And as many of you probably know, Hawaii is facing some challenges with invasive species, um, little fire ants, CRBs, um, et cetera. So, um, the trip was really to go to New Zealand, learn about, you know, what makes their biosecurity system so strong and take that back and try to implement some of that in Hawaii. Um, so they went on that trip to New Zealand, uh, last month in September. Um, and then last meet, last meeting's, uh, questions, I think, are Representative, um, Joan, I got some questions about the teacher housing project. Uh, so hopefully now that SFA is, um, you know, coming to the board, um, those questions can be answered and directed, uh, to SFA, um, through their website like they mentioned. Um, and, uh, they can, you know, follow up with the questions that community members might have about that. Uh, that's it for me. Thank you, guys, and, uh, I can answer any questions you guys may have.
Thank you. Any questions for Senator De La Cruz's office this evening? You on the line?
Yes.
Go ahead, Stephen.
Thank you. Malakai, Stephen Melendez here. Quick question. We haven't heard very much in, uh, recently concerning the tech park. Can we get an update on the tech park? What's there? What's going to be developed? A list of clients? Please.
Yes, so, um, as far as the Mililani Tech Park goes, um, there's a process underway of moving the tech park from under HTDC to the Hawaii Technology Development Corporation over to ADC, the Agribusiness Development Corporation. Um, and, you know, that, I know that area is, uh, zoned for, uh, like warehouse space. Um, so, you know, we're not exactly sure what the end result is exactly going to be. Um, but it'll be some, like, technology, agri-technology, uh, uses in, in that area. But, um, still, you know, very early in the process of, like, having anything developed there. But, um, yeah, zoned for, like, or sorry, technology, like warehouse space. So, um, it's going to have to be, like, some kind of agricultural technology, um, you know, food science, stuff like that, to, uh, hopefully support agriculture in Hawaii is the plan.
Great. Yeah, if you can give us a full update with a land plat, uh, show us a few slides, what's there, what's planned, what's the future? Appreciate it.
Sure. Sure, yeah, whatever, you know.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
I can, uh, ensure that next time. Yep.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you. Moving on to House District Thirty-Eight, Representative Motzmo.
Good evening, Chair, members of the committee and those from the community. I'd like to just really briefly go through my newsletter for you today. So the first, if you turn to the second page, we have some of the updates that and events that we've done. I was able to be a panelist at the Hawaii Children and Youth Summit that happened during their fall break at the Capitol. Uh, they had wonderful questions. Um, there were over a hundred students there. It was a great time and also some community recognition. Next, and I know you are all very well aware of this, but I wanted to give a huge congratulations to Milani Ike Elementary School for being named the 2024 National Blue Ribbon School and an exemplary high-performing school. So really proud of Mililani Ike. And then also, as you all are aware, that the Milani Skate Park Lights, uh, went on on October first, and that was a beautiful example of when the community comes together, um, you know, with the government and was able to put up those lights faster than I've seen any project ever go up, uh, during my time in office. Was also able to participate in the Milani Homecoming Game as well as the Homecoming Parade. So you'll see those photos on the next page, as well as Kipapa Elementary School did a community partner breakfast to update us on their many achievements. On the third page, the important updates want to go to the Milani Emergency Road. I do have an update from DOT and I'm going to read it word for word for you. You have a summary, um, on the update, but I'm going to read to you what was sent to me. So DTS is working with the Hawaii DOT to immediately provide an emergency egress path for the Milani Maoka via the Milani Park and Ride site. This alignment will not affect the existing dog park and will connect the Park and Ride to the H2 Freeway Northbound for quick and efficient egress out of Milani Maoka in the event of an emergency. While we envision a future transit-only path to serve buses entering and exiting the Milani Park and Ride to and from the H2 Freeway, this will be part of a future phase of this project. The future transit connections will benefit Mililani residents' access to planned all-day express buses to carry passengers to and from the Skyline Rail at the Wahiwah Pearl Highland Station, Waiala, sorry, Pearl Highland Station, as well as provide direct access to Wahiwah, Waipahu, and Eva Beach. DTS and DOT's immediate priority is to establish a usable pathway which can provide emergency access to Milani Maoka residents before embarking upon planning the enhanced transit access. Paths connecting the Milani Park and Ride and the H2 Freeway will have safeguards ensuring regular access by personal vehicles, pedestrians, and bicycles are not allowed. So that was the update that I received from DOT. Word from word, again, you have a summary on my update. Um, also wanted to let everybody know the bus routes have been, uh, restored. Hundred bus routes, or seventy-two percent of those suspended, um, have been restored, and efforts to restore the remaining thirty-eight routes continue. So I'll keep you updated on that. Um, and for those, we still are getting a lot of calls about the condo insurance. Please go to repmotsumoto.com. Again, we have a dedicated page on our website. As we get updates from the Governor's Task Force, as we get more information, we are putting those updates on repmotsumoto.com. There's a pop-up that comes up. We also have it up in the toolbar, uh, at the top bar for you to click on, on our website, so people are able to stay up to date on that. Um, and also, the city is starting their year-long road repair, um, project on October seventh, so that began already. I wanted to give you some updates on some events that are coming up. Um, there's Fall Fun at the library. There's a lot of different things that are happening there. But really wanted to highlight also Mililani Trunk or Treat, uh, for Mililani YMCA on October twenty-sixth from four-thirty to seven-thirty. Um, I have been working on my booth. It's an inside-out booth. Please come and visit us. We've put a lot of, uh, we've had a lot of, uh, community members and others come together, and we've put together a pretty spectacular booth, so come and visit us at the Milani Trunk or Treat. I recommend everybody to get there early. Parking is pretty difficult around the Milani YMCA if you come later, uh, so please come for that. And that, there's some other resources on the back page, but with that, I'm going to end my report.
Thank you, Lauren. Any questions for Representative Motzmo's office this evening? Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, Lauren, ju-just a comment, as much as we appreciate you and the, your fellow elected officials that give up their time to update this board, you know, my comment is you, to you specifically, that you are really the one lone representative that shows up in person. So again, thank you very much.
I like face-to-face interaction. I'm a millennial that's not quite a millennial, not fully into the technology.
All right, any other questions? Yes, go ahead, Alice.
Yep. And I will say to Alice's point, everybody who has called our office with the condo insurance issue, it is really helpful for us and for my research team as we're looking into it because everybody's situations are different, right? There's some that are in a single-family dwelling, but they're on CPR land and they're fall under the condo insurance problem. There's others that live more in the traditional apartments or condos that would be affected. So every single person who has reached out to our office has given us a little more information and has helped us when we're crafting some of the legislation that we're doing for next year. We currently have several proposed ideas by my research office. Um, in the coming months, as those become a little more solidified, I'm going to share those with the board. But that input really does help us craft that legislation. So if there's anybody who's listening or you know those who are affected by the condo insurance issue, as much information as can be shared with our office, that's how we're going to produce better legislation because this is something that seems to be, um, evolving as we go through and affecting more and more people, um, as they're being made aware of the condo insurance issue. So thank you also for communicating with our office.
Thank you. Lauren, for Phase One of the Emergency Road.
Yes.
Did they give you a timeframe or what they're looking at?
We have not gotten a timeframe yet. I know Ed had a very optimistic timeframe of December, but I'm not sure if that's still, um, on target because they have brainstormed a little bit more and have shifted the project a little bit. But I'm hoping for next month I will have a little bit more information as well as a timeline. I'll make sure to ask for that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to House District Forty-Six, Representative Perusso. Amy, are you online?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead, Amy. Go ahead.
Um, so, I just got back from the Teacher of the Year Award, and I wanted to let folks know that, um, for our complex area, which includes three complexes, um, Leilehua, Mililani, and Waialua, um, the complex area Teacher of the Year nominee was Ian Kablay, the band director for Waialua High and Intermediate. Um, and he was recognized today, um, and, and actually, that was a really inspiring kind of event. Um, and I am really grateful that this Neighborhood Board in particular, um, place, uh, pays so much attention to public education and has such great support for public education. So I, I thought you would want to know that. Um, there are a couple of events coming up. The first is this Thursday. I'm going to try to share my screen, um, so that you can see. Um.
That came up.
Okay, so the first event that, um, is happening in the near future is our second forum on the budget. So we're going to dive into some of the concerns raised with the budget that we just passed this, this past session. Um, that event will be led in part by Calvert Young. He's the former Director of Budget and Finance for the state. Um, Will White and Devin Thomas from Appleseed. And that forum will be online on Thursday from three-thirty to five via Zoom. Um, the second event will be actually at Mililani High School. So that is, um, gathering priorities. So really just, um, bringing folks together to kind of look at what the community really would like us to invest in, um, in terms of how we, we do spend our money. And it's just a way for people to come together and, and be reminded, um, about our shared values and, um, really help us identify priorities for this coming session. Um, so I wanted to encourage people to attend. That's in person, October thirtieth, Milani High School from six to eight in the library. And, um, anything else to add? I think that, um, you know, I, I will note, because it's of concern to this community because Milani High School was at the forefront of farm-to-school work, that the legislature just received the most current report from the Department of Education. And, um, the percentage of local food that is now going on our children's plates, we've actually gone backwards. So it was six-point-two percent, um, in the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three cycle. Um, and if this report is accurate, and there's some discrepancies, I, I need to dig further into the report, but it looks like now we're at six-point-one-four percent. So that's of some significant concern, and, and hopefully this session will be able to dig into that. And that is going to be an interesting question to manage because we are also, one of the governor's priorities is likely to be universal school meals. So how can we both, um, strengthen our farm-to-school, uh, program and at the same time, um, feed more of our students? So I'm looking forward to those conversations, and I'm available for any questions.
Hey, thank you, Amy. Any questions for Representative Perusso's office this evening?
Oh, before we get to questions, can I actually, um, add one more thing? The last thing I would add is, uh, hopefully folks are aware, but, um, the University of WA system is choosing its next president, and that selection should happen, um, on the sixteenth, so tomorrow. So, um, pay attention to news media. Um, there are two candidates remaining, two finalists. Um, and I think either would be fine. We're just hoping that the process, um, the integrity of the process is maintained. And I think either would be fine. We're just hoping that the process, the integrity of the process is maintained. So, sorry, now I can respond to questions.
Thank you. Any questions? No, seeing none. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to House District thirty seven, Representative Lachica, anybody online?
Yes, I'm online.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, aloha Chair, members of the board. Thank you for your time. I'm Erin Conway here on behalf of Representative Lachica's office. I'll keep it short with you all. We just have a few community updates. We spent a lot of time in the community lately. We met with H P D to meet Acting Major Goncalves in Waihawa. Just to discuss some priorities we had. And we have also been meeting with area schools to discuss needs and priorities for the next session. We participated in the Homecoming Parade and will also be participating in the Y M C A Trunk or Treat on October twenty sixth. As Rep Matsumoto mentioned, the bus routes have been restored and we're currently working on our bill package and bus bus related issues will be included in that. More updates to come. There was one question last month's meeting in regard to the issue with school bus visibility and the signs that are on regular school buses. They don't have the stop signs and all of those things. So we did hear back that these vehicles won't have any special markings put on them since they're meant to be temporary and D O E is unable to make any adjustments on this. So we're just reminding the community to drive safely. Be aware of your surroundings. We apologize for any inconvenience this take, this is. And then lastly, this month is Filipino American History Month. Rep Lachica and the Filipino Caucus have been working hard on a number of events to celebrate. These can be found at filipinohistorymonth.com. And then if anyone has questions to the representative, I'm happy to pass them along. Thank you for your time.
Erin, any questions for Representative Lachica's office? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have our D O T Representative Casey Abbe online?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead, Casey.
Okay, sharing my screen here. And you see my screen? Okay. Good evening Chair, Hazama and members of Milani Maoka Launani Valley Neighborhood Board, Casey Abbe from the State D O T Highway Division. At last month's meeting, I mentioned the graffiti under traffic signal controller box in the Milani Town offering. Our maintenance crew did paint over the graffiti during my field inspection last Wednesday. Also last month's meeting, there was a question on the status of the Wahoo Regional Transportation Plan twenty fifty. Or members can go to the O R T P twenty fifty website shown on the screen to obtain additional information on the twenty fifty plan. I also placed the website on the chat. Ms Samantha Laura is overseeing the development of the twenty fifty plan. If the board would like her to make a presentation of the plan or anything else related to O P O, she is more than willing to make a presentation at a future neighborhood board meeting. She would just need to know what the board would like her to present. This slide shows the process of developing the twenty fifty plan. Currently, they are in the scenario development phase. They will be doing a solicitation of projects in early twenty twenty five, which will then be followed by project prioritization phase and the financial constraint phase. Then in early twenty twenty six, the document goes out for intergovernmental and public review before going to the policy board for adoption in April twenty twenty six. The board may want to invite Samantha to their November nineteenth meeting and ask her to give a more detailed presentation of the development of the twenty fifty plan. And specifically how the board could submit proposed projects on city and state roadways like the emergency exit project mentioned by Representative Matsumoto during the soliciting phase in early twenty twenty five. This concludes my report. If board members or elected officials have any concern about state highways, they can email me. I can take any questions at this time.
Any questions for D O T?
A quick question, sure.
Yeah. Go ahead, Steve.
Thank you. Mr. Abbe, Stephen Melendez here. I have a question for you. I recently saw some documentation concerning, you know, we love electric vehicles. But we understand that some of the batteries increase the weight of the, of the car or truck beyond the weight which is used to test and repel vehicles on the freeway in the guardrails. Are you aware of that?
Yes, we are.
What is the plan?
We are working with the national federal highways. And seeing how we're going to upgrade the crash attenuators and guardrails to meet the current weight of these electric vehicles. We are working with them at this time. So once the federal highways come out with new standards, new designs, we'll be implementing them.
Thank you. When you come up with the plan, would you mind sharing that with the board?
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Casey, you know for our emergency access road. If we're not, if the state is not planning on using any federal funds, does it have to be included in a twenty fifty plan?
It all depends. Sometimes they want to, if it's a big enough project, they would like to keep it in the O P O plan, but it all depends. If they're using a hundred percent state funds, so state funds. It just helps to expedite the process. But, you know, it all depends. I can get back to you on that.
Okay, yeah, let us know. Hopefully we'll get it done way before the plan comes out. Okay, any other questions for D O T? All right, thank you, Casey. All right, moving on to approval of board minutes for our September seventeenth board meeting. Board members, is there any comments or corrections? Hearing none. Any objections to adopting the minutes? Any abstentions? Seeing objections or abstentions, the minutes are adopted. Moving on to reports. Pat C T make central Wahoo Regional Park. A report moving on to committees, education.
As Rep Matsumoto stated. Milani Eke just did win a National Blue Ribbon Award. And their Eke achieved the highest accolades in reading and ranked top among the top five in math proficiency. They have a concern on the, about the new crosswalk that is going to cross Meheula. Particularly with vehicles not stopping for students and they're hoping to contact Councilman Okimoto about maybe making improvements in installing flashing lights. They also reported that they're going to be collaborating with Armed Services of Y M C A to collect food to donate gift Thanksgiving gift baskets to local military families in need. And donations can be dropped off by Wednesday, November six. And the flyer, a school has flyers available for more detail. Just wanted to update that there's going to be a complex cross country meet at the Milani Middle School featuring several local elementary schools on October twenty third. So it starts at nine o'clock. So there's probably going to be a lot of parking on Lahiva Avenue. And so just be mindful of that. Wheeler Middle School is conducting a red ribbon week this week. And this is also to make sure that bring awareness to the dangers of using substances and promote drug free activities. And as far as Laheula, Lahehua High School. They're going to bring Homecoming Parade back and it's going to be tomorrow on October sixteenth at seven. And the parade will travel through Ka'ala Elementary to Kane Street near Fred Wright Park. And that's all I have for today. And I think Steve has some more about Milani Middle School.
Great, thank you Anna. Good report. Camille, can you share the report? Great, thank you. Okay, I'll go to it. At the top is the administration with Principal Thomas Shuro and his assistant principals. We have a great team there at Milani Middle School. The next one down is concerning the hip programs. As you're familiar, the high interest programs are great to encourage the students. Currently there's thirty two enriching and challenging programs, including dance, astronomy, computers, yearbook, sports, robotics and many more. It really helps to round out the education of the students and create new friends. It gives them a lot of hands on experience, especially in physics and robotics. Great opportunity when I was on the board for the fundraising chair of the school. At the beginning of the school year, we always met the parents and gave them the handouts on hip. And many parents said, are these free? It is totally free. It's such a blessing that the teachers donate their time for the after school programs. And then the P T S O funds them a hundred percent, whatever they might need in materials, whatever it is. It's a great partnership. The other item that I have down here at the bottom of this is the, the administration is, office is open for the community meetings. The S C C meeting does, and the P T S O meeting, they both meet on the second Tuesday of the month. The S C C at six P M and at five P M is the P T S O. A few reminders also is that on ten eighteen, the yearbook makeup photos. And on reminder to order the yearbooks by twelve twenty. The girls' basketball have tryouts on ten ten fifteen, ten twenty and ten twenty two. And also on the website for Milani Middle School is the cafeteria menus and other opportunities for the students. And the bottom of the, the second page of the handout is the twenty four twenty five's calendar. So thank you very much. That's my report. Appreciate you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for education? And I have a question. You know that crosswalk? Which one are you talking about?
They just built a new one across, I was looking at my phone. It's right where their, where their gymnasium is. There's a new crosswalk. They just built it.
Across Meheula?
Right.
That's the, it's not, no traffic signaling.
No.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right. Moving on, Parks and Recreation.
No report.
Okay, planning and zoning is not here. Transferred. I'm sorry.
No report.
Have one recognition, Alice. Okay, anybody have any other announcements this evening? Hearing none, our next board meeting will be held on Tuesday, November nineteenth at seven P M at Milani Maoka Elementary School and via Webex virtually. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.